I want to talk to the students. I want to hear their opinion. So that's why I do the walk by line.
Of course, my next question is. Where you at?
Oh, Windsor.
It's in the area?
Yeah.
I know Windsor very well. I was the emergency manager there first.
Yeah.
So it'll be awesome. No, it's in Windsor. But I know Windsor.
I know, right? We'll talk some more.
Yeah, well, congrats until we talk some more.
Yeah, thank you.
So, uh, my roles and responsibilities here are...
Oh. If they...
What did you present?
Yeah, if they tell your students we have questions for you, you're there to support them.
I don't think they did an emergency manager.
I think they did.
They reached out to me and I kicked it to PD, no, it's a PD and fire. Because they were asking about fire suppression systems and security.
You're like, hey, not my kids.
Yeah, and securities.
I know. I don't even know. It's kind of like, you never really talk to them.
Yeah, I saw my being around the house.
Yeah.
And I never...
Yeah.
Well, and Emile was here and I was gone on day one.
Yeah. But I think it's just gonna, they'll walk up here and they'll say, you know, so and so is chief of police. Then you could go, okay, that's my kid.
I think if I'm real poor, I'd see who would have changed.
Maybe I'll ask them to raise their hand again. Do you want me to do that? Yeah. Nice, nice, um, pads. Oh, my God. Is that you?
These are actually old.
It's so nice. I'm like, it's so nice.
Hey, you can scratch it.
Let me see the opening. No, the opening begins this part too. It's like, wow, it's so official.
This you wear like when you're a student.
Yeah. Oh.
Candy dandy.
I know. You look so official.
Right? Don't tell anyone, I'm trying to fool everyone.
It's a little far.
We're giving the council meeting. We'll give them the real deal now. We're going straight.
Let me ask Rachel.
Are you there? Wimble? Wimble. But he gets out. Uh-oh.
Hi, Kelly. I think I interviewed you last time with that same bow. Yeah. Do you have a minute to talk about... Oh. Then you're just deep in the middle of it.
I'll just walk off in the middle of it. See? Did it last year? I haven't even read it. I saw it. I saw it. I guess it was supposed to be a writing. So I didn't read it. It's funny that they all talk to each other. I live on a farm. Do you want them sitting with the city officials now or do we want to move them after we get started? Should we do that?
Hello? Before we get started, we're gonna match the students with the department heads, city staff. And we're gonna call your name and if you could please raise your hand so we could recognize who you are. So for Mayor Lilly and Natalie, you're gonna be up here. Um, you could go on up now. And then, um, Mayor Pro Tem Jamison and Audrey, if you could please go up here. We're gonna have, um, council member Dawn Brand and also Mayor Pro Tem Carol Persbeck coming in. Hello? Hello? Okay.
Test, test, test.
Hello?
Guys, be real close.
Okay, and then council member Alex and Cooper, if you could please go up to the dais. Up there. There's additional chairs on the side. Um, council member Cameron and Hunter. And Quinn. Council member Quinn.
How many council members are we gonna have?
So we have two, four, six, eight, nine. Two, four, six, eight, seven.
Should be nine up there and then there's three more voting members.
And then we have city manager Summer and Tara. You'll be sitting over on this side at this table. City clerk Matt and Royce, you'll be sitting at this table. You're gonna be sitting with them. We'll, we'll, we'll get you in. City attorney Carter. You're gonna be sitting over here. Okay, chief of police Alisa, Jessa, and Juan. You could, you could start to sit over here and then when the chief of police Phil Whalen comes in, we'll let you know. Deputy city manager Ivan. All right, emergency response Thomas and Sage. Randy Collins is your partner today. Finance director Ari, Gavin, and Kyle. And you know Joe's your, um, your partner, Joe Lilio. Have you met him before? Fire chief Amy and Dylan. Okay, there's fire chief Donovan over there. Human resources director Ashatine and Colette. Thank you, Sean. And, and we got David Serrano, HR director. IT director Alisa and Brett. Alisa and Brett, okay. So you're with Charles Mallory and I don't see him in the room yet, but I'll point him to you when he comes in.
Hey, guys. How y'all doing? Just about through with school, another few weeks. All right. Well, hopefully you've enjoyed, uh, it's nice seeing you again after, after a couple of months. Hopefully you've enjoyed this project. Um, hopefully you learned something about some of the complexities about, of what we do here at the city and, and all the different things that you have to take into account when you're, um, deciding how to run a city, how to use resources. It is complicated, um, and, and you're, um, gonna, you're gonna have to sort through some probably very good proposals today and select one. Um, but we also want to hear, just because one project may win, I'm guessing that there are components or pieces of each of these projects that maybe, um, the city should consider going forward with the remodel of the teen center. So in addition, city council to voting on your favorite project, I think the council would also like to hear what other pieces of some of the other projects or any other advice you have for us moving forward. This is really exciting for us, um, not just because we like working with you and, and we want you to be encouraged to look at careers in public service, but because this is a real issue and project that we have identified, um, which is what to do with the teen center. We're lucky enough, um, which doesn't always happen in city managers' lives to have some, some resources, but we're lucky enough to actually have some dollars set aside, um, to use to solve this problem. And, um, based on the ideas we hear today, um, we're gonna move into hopefully a design phase. We'll likely bring on board some folks to help us do actual designs, um, go out and do further outreach with the community. Probably the people that are juniors this year will be involved in helping us with, with getting the final design together. Um, we will then have to go through a process of putting it out to bid, getting proposals back, coming back to council, having them approve the contractor, um, and the plans, and then doing the work. So that, that's a, a long way of me saying that this is really a very, a first step in what is unfortunately kind of a long process. Um, in city time, we have to do things according to all these rules and provisions and state laws, but we will move forward with the remodel of the teen center and the skate park. Um, hopefully in one of your trips back to El Segundo from college or wherever you, you go next year, you'll see some progress and you'll see a finished result here in the next year or two with the teen center remodel. So, um, myself and the department heads, thank you for your, your work effort. We're looking forward to your ideas and we're looking forward to actually moving forward and, and making some of these things happen. And at this point, I think I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Perstuck.
Thank you. So, we as a council really want to thank you for participating in this civic day. We're real excited that we have our youth involved in our community because the community is you. And, um, as you guys get older and move into the world, go into, go into college or go into the workforce, you'll realize that local government has a really direct impact on your lives. And we really want you to know that local government is a sec, a sector that you can get involved in, either going into from a workplace or also being coming elected official. Um, your voice does matter and if you don't speak up, no one else will. Like, don't we expect your neighbor to speak up on your behalf because you have to use your voice. And, um, it's real important that all of you understand that what you do today is really gonna have an impact on what we're gonna do in the future. And we are gonna take your ideas and we are gonna listen and we are gonna transform that teen san, center. It might be a hyper ed, we don't know, but we will be doing something with the teen center and your voice and your communi, uh, your efforts is gonna play a key role in that development. So we're real excited, um, and I just real thankful that you're here today, being present. And, um, just know that we are listening and this is your community and we're, we're real proud of you that you're spending the time on this. Um, and please know that we're always here for you and any questions throughout the department, everyone's here at your disposal. So, uh, enjoy the day and thank you for your efforts. Dawn, did you want to say any words?
Afternoon, everyone. It's great to see you again. It seems like, uh, uh, so fast to come back together and maybe I'm blending it with last year's experience. I think civic education, like financial literacy, is really important to have in our high schools. That's why I love this event. It's something you're not just reading about, it's something you're also doing. And, uh, your project today is very real, as the city manager laid out. Something's gonna happen as a result of, uh, your dialogue and, uh, recommendations here, and that's great. Anybody here old enough to vote already? Okay, I sure hope you do. You understand that, uh, you have to, to vote, right? You can't just, uh, blog. You can't just, uh, participate in social media. You actually have to vote for it to count. Democracy works better when many people participate in it. And, uh, I think you're gonna grow up to participate in it because of events like this and this great class you have at El Segundo High School, uh, that focuses on civic education. So I think today will be fun and one of those things you do in school that you'll remember for years and years to come, like, like I remember special things, uh, that I, uh, participated in when I was at Hawthorne High. Uh, so, uh, make the best of it today. We're very interested to, uh, hear what you think and to, uh, coach you through the process. Thank you.
Frank, did Paul want to say anything? She just walked in from the school board. Okay, and then just a house...
Mr. Gasson?
Oh, yeah. And just a housekeeping thing, you know, this entire meeting sort of focused on the presentation, so if you want to sit on this side of the room, it's usually better. If you can't see the screen.
And the one thing I can say to you today, be open and honest and use your voice and take this seriously because we as a city are taking it seriously and it's important. I can't express enough to be present. Be present here, be present because we need your information. We, we can't service you as, as the teens of our, of our community unless we hear from you. So you guys are representing all the teens here in El Segundo, so please be engaged, be present, um, and give us your, give us your ideas and opinions because they do matter.
Thanks, Carol. I just wanted to come up and thank all of my students that are here today, all of you. You worked very hard, no matter what happens today, because I know some of you are gonna turn on each other today. Because it is a contest, but you all did a great job and I, I wanted to commend you all for the, the hard work that you did. And I also want to thank all of the city officials that have participated. I know you got, uh, inundated with emails from my students and I appreciate your time and effort responding to them. Thank you all very much.
One last thing, if you can remember to please speak into the mic as we're recording. We want to hear your voice. And, um...
It's being filmed.
It's being filmed, yeah. And then we have a script in front of you, so look for your name. That's gonna be your script. Um, we're gonna start with Mayor Lilly. If you have any questions, we're here.
The meeting will now come to order. The pledge of, the pledge of allegiance will be led by council member Quinn.
Flags over here.
Flags over here.
In the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentations?
Presentations. City manager Summer will be making the presentation.
There are, is it on?
Yes, it's on.
There are no presentations.
Everyone, please go back to your seats. The city clerk will now call roll. City clerk?
Mayor Lilly.
Here.
Mayor Natalie.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jamison.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Audrey.
Here.
Council member Cameron.
Here.
Council member Hunter.
Here. Council member Quinn.
Here. Today, today we only have one agenda item with four groups presenting. Item number one is regarding recreation and parks, consideration and possible action regarding updating the teen center, including structural and renovation improvement and programming enhancement. Each group represents a class. At the end of all four presentations, we will make a motion. The motion will be to vote for the overall winning presentation. The winning group represents a class that will get an automatic A from Professor Gass class. If council so pleases, a second motion may be made to pick out favorites from each presentation to combine into an action itself or staff. City manager Tara, who will first to present?
The first group to present will be Sage, Alisa, Molly, Juan, Ashton, Ramisia, and Deja.
Let me know when you want me to present.
Before we start with our remodelification to the teen center, we created a poll...
Are you guys trying to say something before we play the video or, uh...
Do they all just have a seat in the front row until it's done?
Yeah. Say the front row until it's done. Have you... We had a poll to be able to see what other students of us are gonna wanna see change at the teen center. Fifty-two point eight percent of the responses said they had never visited the teen center before and only twenty point two percent visited once a month or more. Only fifteen point nine percent used the skate park once a month or more. Sixty-seven point seven percent of the responses prefer the basketball court and seventy-five percent agree that turning the basketball court into a multipurpose court would increase the use. Seventy-six point six say there is nothing for them to do at the teen center. Our idea of a deck with a barbecue and new furniture was the most popular idea with sixty-five point two percent of responses saying it would make them visit the teen center more often. Eighty-one point one percent say open wifi would attract them to visit the teen center more and seventy-seven point five percent would visit the teen center more if remodeled by the students.
What's most important about building a community center for teenagers? Some might say it's the building itself, but the truth is that it is the communal relationships that the events and activities that occur in that building breed. What's most important are the people that fill up this public space and fill it with life and memories of laughter and adventure. That being said, our goal in the Parks and Rec Committee is to create that space, to create the place where people want to go spend their time. To achieve this goal, we started out by expanding our groups of kids that would be interested in going. And what better way to do that than to have an all-purpose, multi-use court that would include not only basketball, but volleyball, badminton, tetherball, and footsall as well. This plethora of options would attract a much larger audience to the area and definitely increase use of the court and attendance to this teen center as a whole. Lastly, just outside the court, we will have seating for spectators in the form of surfboard benches to continue with the beach theme we will have. When it comes to the skate park, we want to expand the size. It is very clear that one of the major highlights of the teen center is its skate park, so why not build on that and make it bigger and better for the kids that go every day to use it? To do this, we plan on shrinking the basketball court to new dimensions of thirty-five by fifty-five feet and shifting the court perpendicularly from where it is now to provide a much larger and open space for the skaters. In the skate park, we plan on adding a bowl to the center of the park and have half pipes and other utilities around the bowl in a square formation. In addition, we will be painting the skate park itself to match our beach theme, which will liven up the area and add a vibrant and necessary pop of color. In addition to the teen center will be a deck and the extra space that we have in between the court, skate park, and lower parking lot area hanging over the big grass hill. This will be a great all-inclusive hangout area where we will have picnic-style tables and a barbecue grill for barbecue cookouts. This can also double as a rest and snack area for the skaters or sport court users. In addition, there will be lights hanging from the trees and the deck itself so that it can be well lit at night and still be usable in the later hours of the day. Lastly, the Parks and Rec Division will, would like to install an easy H2O water fountain and bottle fill-up station for everyone. There will be many outdoor activities in this new space and it will be vital for the kids to stay hydrated and healthy, especially on the ever-common hot California days.
The Parks and Rec Committee have a grand estimated total of four hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars with plans to renovate the skate park and the basketball court and put in a wooden deck, four surfboard benches, two picnic tables, and a barbecue.
We are Public Works number one focusing on the stage and the mural. We decided to change the mural in the front of the teen center to attract more visitors, tourists, and common bystanders. The old mural of the teen center was a bland blue wall with dull yellow wording. We decided to change this because we thought that having a more artistic, relatable, and attractive mural would increase visitor traffic to the El Segundo Teen Center. The new mural was inspired by the Beach City Surf culture of El Segundo and the famous art Damien Fulton's work. We also plan to purchase a movable stage that can be rolled in and out of the main floor of the teen center. This is an easily accessible way to introduce a variety of events such as live music, poetry, or open mic nights.
The first Public Works Committee has an estimated grand total of seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars to repaint the mural with all of the necessary supplies needed and renovate the stage.
Human Resources were tasked with finding new furniture and creating a program tied to the public library. If you went to the teen center weeks ago, you'd find broken foosball tables and grimy worn-out couches. The remodeled teen center would include new working foosball and pool tables as well as clean sofas and beanbag chairs where the teens want to...
We are Public Works Number One focusing on the stage and the mural. We decided to change the mural in the front of the teen center to attract more visitors, tourists, and common bystanders. The old mural of the teen center was a bland blue wall with dull yellow wording. We decided to change this because we thought that having a more artistic, relatable, and attractive mural would increase visitor traffic to the El Segundo Teen Center. The new mural was inspired by the beach city surf culture of El Segundo and the famous art Damien Fulton's work. We also plan to purchase a movable stage that can be rolled in and out of the main floor of the teen center. This is an easily accessible way to introduce a variety of events such as live music, poetry, or open mic nights. The first Public Works Committee has an estimated grand total of seven thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars to repaint the mural with all of the necessary supplies needed and renovate the stage.
Human Resources were tasked with finding new furniture and creating a program tied to the public library. If you went to the teen center weeks ago, you'd find broken foosball tables and grimy worn-out couches. The remodeled teen center would include new working foosball and pool tables, as well as clean sofas and beanbag chairs where the teens want to hang out with friends, relax and read on a beanbag chair, or study on one of our new rounded couches. The new teen center has something for everyone. For teens and designed by teens, the new teen center will be better than ever before.
The teen center is also going to partner with the library to create a new tutoring program. Tutors would sign up at the teen center and attend training led by teen center employees. Tutors must volunteer for a full month of tutoring to help the children once a week in the large conference room in the back of the library. This tutoring would be completely free to students and tutors would receive community service hours in exchange for their time. This gives the community a good free place to send their children for extra school help. Human Resources have an estimated grand total of four thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars with plans to renovate the pool table, the foosball table, and add in a new ping-pong table, a beanbag, stools, a glass door, new couches, and install a projector and bathroom mirrors.
We are Building Safety and Public Works Committee Number Two. We have been appointed to renovate the bathroom and transform the gym into an arcade room.
Our plan to renovate the bathroom is to first replace the worn-out tile with brand-new tile. We have chosen glazed porcelain floor tile to give it a fresh new look. We have decided to incorporate the beach theme with the bathroom as well with aqua pure paint along the walls. We are also planning on taking out the existing sinks and replacing them with two wall-mounted sinks. We will also be taking out the current faucets and replacing them with single-handled bathroom faucets. We plan on getting five brand-new toilets to replace the current worn-out ones. The two urinals are going to be replaced in the men's bathroom. The stalls are another element in the restroom to be replaced. All stalls are going to be replaced with a solid gray plastic material. It has come to our attention that the girls' bathroom at, at the teen center does not have a handicap accessible stall. We have decided to solve this problem by replacing one current stall with a wheelchair-accessible one. This will make the teen center comply with the American Disability Act of nineteen ninety and update the building requirements. The boys' bathroom will have the two wheelchair-accessible stalls to replace the existing ones. We have decided to replace the gym room entirely due to the ineffective equipment. Instead of replacing the equipment, we have decided that it's better to renovate the gym room into an arcade room that will be used more frequently.
To begin with the room itself, we have decided to paint the walls navel, a dark blue color. We wanted to install LED lights outlining the room's interior.
We plan on moving the existing ear hockey table into the arcade room and purchasing three classic arcade games to move into the new arcade room. We have decided to implement Street Fighter, NBA Basketball Hoop, and Ms. Pac-Man and Galactica. The Second Public Works Committee have an estimated grand total of eight thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars to remodel the bathrooms and an estimated grand total of twenty thousand eighty dollars to put in an arcade room, which puts the total Parks and Rec amount at an estimated grand total of twenty-eight thousand six hundred and five dollars. The Information Technology Department was tasked with updating the wifi, incorporating new gaming systems, adding new speakers, and introducing a new movie projector and screen. As a department, we knew that the teen center already had wifi for staff use only, but we thought having wifi open to everyone would attract more people to the teen center. This new wifi includes capabilities for streaming music, streaming movies, doing homework, browsing social media, and playing video games. We also incorporated a light filter on the wifi to ensure the safety of the teens and the young children using the wifi.
Next, we voted as a class to incorporate a new movie screen and projector into the teen center to open up opportunity to have movie nights as an El Segundo community. These community movie nights will be a highlight of the recently renovated teen center and will bring the younger community closer together. The new, new movie screen will include a remote-controlled drop screen from the ceiling. This will make it easily accessible for the staff at the teen center and prevent damage to the screen. Along with the new movie screen, we upgraded the current speaker system to a surround-sound audio system. Uh, this new speaker system will allow for high-quality audio throughout the entire teen center.
Our final task as a department was updating the gaming systems at the teen center. Updated gaming systems and games would undeniably attract teens to the teen center to hang out with their friends. We wanted the new teen center to be a safe new hangout spot for teens and we think all of these new upgrades will attract more teens.
IT has an estimated grand total of one thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars with the means to renovate and install surround-sound speakers, a movie screen, projector, and the projector itself.
We are the Fire, Police, Emergency, and Building Safety Committee. We have noticed some safety concerns and we have some solutions to fix them.
First, we noticed a big concern with missing ceiling panels. We plan on fixing the ceiling and replacing any panels that are old or missing.
Next, we noticed the poor placement of the fire extinguisher and how hard it was to find, so we're planning on installing a fire extinguisher cabinet that would stand out and make the fire extinguisher easily accessible.
Next, we realized that the skate park has and could lead to minor injuries such as cuts and scratches, so we wanted to implement a new and more equipped first aid kit, which comes with nitro gloves and AED and pocket masks. This would help prepare the teen center to be more emergency-prepared and make it a safer environment and it would be located on top of the fire extinguisher cabinet for easy access.
Additionally, we thought of the sanitation at the teen center could be improved, so we would like to implement a hand sanitizer dispenser at the, at entrance of the teen center. This would make cleaning hands quicker and allowing people to go back inside after playing on the courts and/or going skating.
Also, we noticed a problem with the placement of the current smoke detector at the teen center. We need to move the detector closer to the ceiling and would like a newer detector as well.
Lastly, as a class, we wanted to implement an air conditioning system at the teen center to attract more people during the hot summers. Currently, at the teen center, there are huge fans placed in the upper ceiling corners, so we believe an AC system would cool down the El Segundo Teen Center visitors better than the current fans would.
Safety has an estimated total of two hundred and thirty-six dollars. It includes a fire extinguisher, a fire extinguisher cabinet, red cross pocket mask, capacity sign, a box of nitro gloves, exit signs, a no-smoking sign, and a hand wash moisturizer. The cost to also install air conditioning would be around thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. With an overall budget of six hundred and sixty thousand, we plan to use that money to pay for all the necessary renovations and equipment needed to update the teen center.
So Mayor, I think this is a time where council asks questions about this presentation. Remember, you're not deciding until the end, but you can ask questions. The, the mayor would usually ask the other council members if they have any questions.
Councilmembers, do you guys have any questions?
Um, if you could just remind me one more time for the location of the barbecue pit and if you guys believe that would pose any dangers at all for students handling it or will it only be workers of the teen center?
We decided to put the wooden deck right where the grass hill is next to the basketball court and yes, we saw that it would pose a safety precaution, but with the help of this public safety department and the, also the committee who was in charge of that, we just, oh, we came up with solutions to form support beams and other safety precaution, um, ideas to prevent any other harm. As, to answer your question about who will be running it, we were majority, majoritarily thinking about the workers to help, especially since the idea of the barbecue is considered hazardous, especially if teenagers were fully responsible of using it. And, yeah.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Um, can you guys remind me of how the layout is going to work outside with enlarging the skate park, also adding an all-purpose court, and adding a deck to the outside area of this teen center?
Um, the format of, wait, can you repeat the question again?
Um, the layout?
The layout?
The layout.
Okay, so the layout, we were deciding, it's more, it's like to shrink the basketball court, AKA will be also known as the multipurpose court, put it on the side where the parking lot is on Grand, I think, I believe it is, or is it Eucalyptus Street? Grand Street, where Grand is, um, move, um, remodel and renovate the multipurpose court in the corner on that street, which get, allows more space for the skate park to be, to be create, um, remodeled as well and expanded, as well as creating a better shape and, and for what we have for ideas such as the center bowl and like the other ideas that we had for the skate park? As well as, we didn't think the, the wooden deck would be, um, be considered a situation, a, a problem with the idea of the wooden deck, I mean, the, the skate park and the multipurpose court, so we decided to put it where the grass hill is at, so it won't pose any difficulties with the renovation of both the skate park and the multipurpose court.
Once again, you are putting the deck where the hill is?
Yes. Yes.
Right, and that's safe?
Yes, well, with the Public Works and Safety Department, we, um, came up with solutions and precautions to prevent any harms to the stu, to the people who use the wooden deck.
Thank you.
I, a question for you guys. Have you thought about a partnership with our local Lakers team here in El Segundo since they currently just formed a E-team to help pay for the equipment?
Um, no, we did not.
Uh, yes, I have a question. I was wondering, uh, did you guys have any, uh, safety precautions? Because all I saw was, uh, fire, what is it, a smoke alarm? But I don't see anything such as cameras being implemented to keep the, uh, children safe.
Uh, we as a safety, you know, fire police committee, we didn't think that cameras would be needed for, at the skate park as, you know, nothing really there is, worth stealing. And, uh- In terms of any other safety, uh, you know, devices, uh, we felt that a simple first aid kit and, you know, normal hand sanitizer station was, you know, equipped for any situation you could be met with at the teen park.
Thank you.
I have two questions if possible. Um, for, I didn't see much on the cost of the new skate park, so like the moving of the basketball court over to the little parking lot and the, where the new skate park is going. And along with that, um, what about new fencing and whatnot, just to keep the children in, or are we just keeping it open for the public or are we putting a gate around?
For the fencing question, uh, we partnered up with a company that actually gave us a pricing bit, a pricing sheet of how much it will cost for the remodel of the multipurpose court. Currently, I don't know the exact price on the top of my head, um, but I was, it'll be like estimated around sixty thousand dollars for the, oh, with the renovation. It also comes with new fencing and also they'll be in charge of the, the re, remodeling and the moving of where the current basketball court is to the new location where we possibly think it would be better for.
Right now, the skate park is open twenty-four hours to the public, but the lights turn off at eight or like whenever it closes. Do you guys plan on keeping it open twenty-four hours or putting regulations on it?
We were thinking about just keeping the same timings as, as it has been because we've realized that with those times, like, it hasn't been considered a problem for the community, also for the skaters.
On top of that, the curfew of the city adds to the longer ti, we, as a whole class, we were thinking of extending the hours of the teen center as a whole, but then we thought about the city rules with the curfew being at ten PM. Closing the skate park earlier is a better time to get the kids home sa, and safer at the right time.
Um, with you guys adding the skate park and the multipurpose, um, court, were you guys totally getting rid of the parking lot or just moving it or what was going to be the new deal with parking?
Um, the parking lot is not going to be like, there's no going to be, there's no sudden changes that we, we saw with the property of the, of the teen center that it's a slight little curve, so instead of that little, like, curve that's currently there, we're just gonna make it more of an angle, so there's no parking, like, measurements being taken away out of the current parking lot.
I'm sorry, what you just said contradicts what you said earlier. You did say that you were moving the basketball court or the all-purpose court to the parking lot and now you're saying that we're not going to lose any parking?
We're moving it closer to the parking lot. It's not really taking space away from it because we realized that it makes it more of an angle because currently where it stands, it makes like a weird shape within the teen center and also, uh, the skate park and the basketball court. So we decided to put it in that angle and it's really not going to affect the parking lot as much. Only thing it will do is make the oval shape, I mean, the curved shape entrance more of a rectangular shape entrance.
I, in your video, you guys mentioned a tutoring system. What demographic are you trying to hit with that?
Um, our primary demographic was like elementary sto, school children that don't exa, that don't have the same type of access to teachers that, uh, middle school and high school students would after school or at lunch or something. So we were thinking that high school, um, students would go and help those younger elementary school kids, uh, with their schoolwork.
Uh, yes, I got a question. Um, so do you guys have anything in, uh, set in place in order, uh, just in case of a disaster or such as, uh, stuff, uh, from preventing people from graffiti or stolen property?
Um, I'm sorry, your question was about s, a graffiti?
Yes, uh, does your plan happen to stop anything to stop graffiti?
Uh, no, we, our plan does not have anything that stops graffiti.
Do you have, uh, also any other emergency plans other than just the, uh, smoke alarm?
Uh, well, there's more in the video of them than just a smoke alarm, but, uh, we do not have any emergency preparedness, no, for the building, no, no.
Alright, thank you.
There's more than we already have said.
The teen center holds an evacuation plan for, um, we'd follow the same evacuation rules that they were already following prior to the renovations. On top of the vandalism and, um, kind of active crime during the teen center, we, the teen center has protocols to call in the police directly or since they're right up the street, right around the corner, so that's the precautions that we would take moving forward with that. We're kind of just following the same precautions that they have been following forward. Nothing's updated with those.
And then, how did you guys, um, more specifically, conduct your research based off of reaching out to the community other than in polls? Like, for your poll, was your sample all students? Did you include parents, teachers? Where did you take the sample from?
Um, our, I'm sorry. Our poll was basically anyone who like lived in El Segundo or like in the El Segundo area just because like the teen center is in El Segundo, so it would affect the El Segundo community, so.
Um, as well, um, majority of the time, like, we formed our committees as people who are we relevant, like, towards the situations such as the Parks and Rec, my, the committee I was in charge of, we, I major, um, picked the people who would provide, like, provide information that will benefit the renovation of the skate park. As one of our pe, the people in charge of the Parks and Rec with me was a skater and as well as people who will play basketball, also like athletes, like people who would like see like what they would want to see, so what they want to see for the ben, the benefits of the teen center and, um, and their vision as well.
That was a good job, you guys, thank you.
The second group to present will be Meredith, Celi, Chloe, Ivan, Gavin, Ari, and Camille.
In order to know the public's opinion on the teen center, we conducted a survey and sent it to teens in El Segundo. We received over three hundred responses to our survey with the majority being thirteen to fifteen-year-olds and the rest being sixteen to eighteen-year-olds.
People want new gym equipment, new events including movie nights, food trucks, concerts, and basketball tournaments, and more rec park staff for supervision. We also learned that the majority of teens are receiving their information from Instagram and the high school and middle school bulletins. We can use this information to promote these events and the teen center redesign. What we talked about when we were designing the skate park was the flow of skating in the skate park, uh, the traffic within the skate park, the speed of riding, difficulty of structures, visibility within the skating park, and stylistic discipline, so like the types of skating. As you can see, this El Segundo skate park, four thousand square feet long, built by Perkins Row in two thousand and two.
The skate park has not gone through any renovations since being built in two thousand and two. The floors and skating structures are cracked and worn down, leading to unsafe skateboarding. Similarly, the quality of the skate park is low and is pushing away skateboarders. What are the major flaws of the El Segundo skate park? What are the major flaws of the El Segundo skate park?
Um, one thing that I'd have to complain about is how cracked and worn out the ground is at our skate park. Uh, our skate park is comparatively dirty to the other skate park. There's always like trash left around. And the way the obstacles are made are kind of awkward if you were to ask any person that skated.
El Segundo is a small skate park with ledges, manual pads, banks, stairs, rails, hubba ledges, and a euro gap. We plan on renovating the existing ledges and banks as well as adding a skateboard, snake run, a kicker, a new rail on the ground, a ramp with a box, and two hubbas.
To better the overall complexion of the skate park, we are adding more dynamic structures. The area surrounding the label C will house a snake run and skateboard. Similarly, we are adding additional ledges, two sets of stairs, a new rail, new rims, and more hubbas throughout the skate park.
The most major renovation we are planning to add is the addition of a snake run and bull in the skate park. Bull is one of the most popular structures in the skating community as it provides a medium for a variety of tricks and styles.
The skate park can be a component of a larger plan to incubate foot traffic and build a vital social space. We plan to do this by promoting and hosting local business events and youth events. The business and youth events will be skate contests that include food, raffles, and prizes.
The teen center cr- basketball court is cracked and slanted, but the new versa court is better than concrete as it won't hurt your knees. And the basketball damage will not be as bad. Also, the versa courts are customizable, so we can add an El Segundo logo.
Backrack will be placed in front of the teen center in the parking lot where people can place their bikes or skateboards when they come to events or just to hang out. Water bottle filling station will be placed by the basketball court for players to fill up their water bottles and hydrate during their game.
Gavin, and this is my friend Kyle. We are gonna be touching on safety with the police at the El Segundo teen center. Some steps that we are gonna take to assure that our teen center is safer is updating emergency binders so they're, they are up to date. Also adding security cameras and barricade areas.
I'm Harrison, and the stuff we're gonna include in our fire safety kits are fire extinguishers, fire systems, P A system, the set of evacuation routes, emergency mapped, updated emergency binders, location safes, a fire hose, ramp to the stage, fire hydrants, E M R, trained staff, and that's it.
My name's Allison Parker, and ideas to make events safer at the teen center include more security, um, such as security cameras and security officers, someone checking IDs at the door, sign-in and sign-out sheets, and um, police vehicles parked outside.
Our committee is in charge of public works and information systems.
We're specifically responsible for furniture. In terms of furniture, we wanted to create a more comfortable and open space for the different sections of the teen center.
The different sections consist of gaming, a computer area, and a lounge area.
Each couch has a different price. The basic couches for sitting are each about four hundred and thirty dollars and we plan on getting two. The longer couch is two thousand and five dollars and the gaming couch is two thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Finally, for the game, we looked into arcade games, Pac-Man costing at about three hundred and eighty dollars and Ski Ball at four hundred eleven dollars. For the table games, we plan on an air hockey table which goes for about three thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and a new foosball table for about five hundred dollars. In total, we would be spending about nine thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars of our budget on furniture.
As we are responsible for the mural as well as coming up with the idea of making it a community effort, we want to create an open completion for the teens of El Segundo to submit their art for a chance to have it displayed on the south wall-facing grand.
For the mural to be completed in this way, certain requirements are in order. We would need to consider different insurance types such as general liability and auto insurance. An artist contract would need to be formed as well as a business license and worker's comp declaration.
The indoor gym at the teen center is a small and dimly lit room that has a variety of broken machinery, making it a not popular at the teen center. The already small room has rubber tiles and dirty walls giving a more closed-off appearance. Machines are unhygienic, broken, and old. Furthermore, there is no water fountain within the gym. These issues combined are the reasons why the gym is not highly used and not treated with care.
To make the gym a more frequent spot that teenagers can work out at, we are proposing to install a turf space. It'll look aesthetically pleasing and very functional for cardio and agility-based exercises like ladder work, cone work, and aerobic stretching to start your lifting. Additionally, we are adding wall mirrors and fresh paint to make the gym look bigger and more open. The current paint on the walls is chipping, flaking, and dirty.
We would also include a thirty-two inch Insignia seven hundred and twenty P T V to add entertainment while people are working out. The T V would be placed on the right of the wall next to the gym entrance, allowing viewing access from all areas. There are going to be five yoga mats included in the gym to allow a wider variety of floor workouts. To allow ventilation within the gym, a ceiling fan will be installed and the entrance door connecting to the main room to the teen center will be removed. This would make the gym less stuffy and hot.
The gym needs to be changed because it is very unappealing and mostly it is an eyesore. With the gym being new and improved, we could get more people into the teen center and have it be more of a city space rather than a meet-and-greet spot. Rather than paying for an expensive gym, something a teen doesn't have money for, the new gym will provide a free and quality workout.
Our committee is in charge of library services as well as recreation and parks. For the renovated teen center, our idea is to build a computer bar in the unused space. This computer bar would consist of five brand-new I Mac computers on one side and a countertop charging station on the other. There will also be built-in shelving on the inside area of the countertop to house a reading library dedicated to summer reading books. This will allow students to get their assignments done in the teen center or check out their books there. In order to create a functional space, we want to build a brand-new ca- bar top with marble counters. We also want to put several electrical outlets in the countertop as well. The inside of the area will have a seating area with one couch and two hanging chairs and a fish tank to the left.
Structural electrical engineers will be hired to upgrade the electrical system. An additional circuit connector will be needed to add the new dedicated circuit connector for the desktop computers. The estimated cost for the electrical work would be roughly twelve thousand.
Once remodeling of the teen center is done, we'll advertise a huge grand opening event. The grand opening event will be hosted by recreations and parks. We will have food trucks at the opening, which would be free of cost if teen center offers them free parking. All they would need is an El Segundo business license and insurance to sell at the event. We will also reach out to local bands and artists for entertainment. Any monthly activities after the grand opening can be paid by the teen center's trust fund or through fundraisers. We can charge to enter basketball tournaments, dance classes, or even goat yoga classes we can host there too.
In regards to teen center employment, one to two people work at the teen center at a time right now, and we'd like to keep this number. We'll make a few small adjustments such as hours and training. The hours of operation are two thirty to nine, Monday through Thursday, and two thirty to ten thirty P M, Friday and Saturday. The expected peak hours are from two thirty to six because usually teens go with teen center after school. With the changes our class is recommending, we're expecting more activity at the teen center after school times.
We plan on adding a bunch of new features such as a T V complete with surround sound system speakers and Netflix as well as a projector for movie nights that we will host one Saturday a month.
As head director of the finance committee, I am in charge of communicating with other group leaders to attain information needed to construct our newly renovated teen center.
Hello, as you probably know, money is the main limiting factor of all modern public projects. Our team assures that the teen center is revived and new, but at a reasonable price.
We received emails from each committee discussing their overall budget and then created a Google Doc with these financial statements.
We then added up all the prices from all the committees and to determine a final cost.
Then went ahead to email the city officials to ensure we met all the requirements.
The city officials were quick to reply and gave us insight as to what we could do to make this project possible and financially attainable.
These are the final prices that we established with the other committees.
This has been our El Segundo teen center meeting. Thank you, City Council, for watching.
This is time for questions.
Hi, um, I just saw on the screen an electric gazebo. Could you guys um explain that a little bit more?
So, uh, that's not yet a hundred percent, that's why it was highlighted. But at the end of remodeling the skate park, since there is um a water issue when it rains, the skate park is completely closed and it floods. So we're either adding drainage or an electric gazebo on top of it to uh kind of protect it from water damage and other unnatural events.
I have a que- my question is to you guys, how are you gonna expand the skate park even though it's all on that hill and so edged up?
Uh, we never said we're gonna expand it. We're just gonna renovate existing structures in that four thousand square feet that we have.
Yeah, and my other question is, maintenance, how's everything gonna be maintained? Like the fish tank you're pitching?
So, that's why we didn't use the entire um six hundred and sixty thousand dollars of the budget. Um, the remainder of the money, as we know, things get old, they break, so we're gonna constantly renovate, repaint, um, reduce all the aspects of the skate park.
Um, I think you guys said something about increasing the size of the gym, and I was just wondering um how you'd do that and what the plan would be.
Um, we didn't, we didn't say anything about increasing the size of the gym. We just wanted to get all new equipment and put in a little turf space and repaint everything, just make it all brand new. Oh yeah, and mirrors on the walls.
And then I had a question about the placement for all of the games. Just overall, where is everything going to be located inside the teen center itself?
So as of right now, um, all of the games are set up when you walk in on the east side of the building. And we're gonna replace the pool tables that are there with new ones as well as the air hockey table and the foosball table. So we're just gonna have them all on that one side so they're easily accessed. Um, I didn't see if you guys mentioned the um safety issues of the ceiling or the bathroom. Do you guys have any plans for that? Um, the ceiling's definitely gonna be renovated. I don't know why we didn't mention it, sorry, but that's definitely an issue that we have to work on. And then the bathrooms, uh, the stalls, we wanted to redo. The sinks seem to be fine right now, but with all of the extra budget money, we definitely wanna work on that as well.
Uh, yes, I got a question. So I got a question. Um, in the video, uh, you were talking about reworking the gym, but was there any polling to support that the people would want this?
Uh, yes, we did show the poll question early on that the, it was wanted by the middle schoolers.
Thank you.
How would you, what other activities would you implement? Like on the weekend, you guys had a movie night and you guys said you got, we'll do a basketball tournament. So what days?
Oh, what, what days or what activities?
What activities and what days?
So for the skate park, since that's one of the more popular um aspects of the skate park, we're planning, like I said, adding skate camps and such. And uh, we've hosted it before, but it's, they're usually like once every couple of months, so we're gonna increase the amount um of activities we have at the skate park alone. So that's supposed to bring out hundreds and hundreds of of skaters, cause alone the activities, each, each activity that we host, it brought around a hundred to two hundred people. So we hope to continually increase the amount of those we have a month.
And with those um new programs you're gonna be doing, or just more often, are you going to charge for those to renovate more money into the teen center, or is everything free?
Um, so part of it's gonna be from the budget, but um stores like Active, they um, they actually enjoy sponsoring their goods and um kind of reconnecting with the community as they're a big um aspect of the skating community at El Segundo. So again, we mentioned the local businesses, um, restaurants, anything that wanna promote their products and such. Um, if they have the proper license um to host that, then we're inclined to kind of let them um promote the products.
Council members, any more questions?
Yeah, the last one is just, why do you guys personally believe that like your project should be the one chosen? Like, what's the best part about yours that's different, that sticks out, that's your, this is what makes ours different?
We decided to be more event-based, so we're talking about like food trucks and having, implementing stuff like that, and we're talking about having more tournaments. So people can, like teams could give like twenty dollars and then whoever wins can collect the money. So people are inclined to come. It's not just go-to-go, it's more like go for a prize.
I have a que- how about safety? What are you guys gonna do about safety in the weight room and just all around the teen center?
Um, that's why we wanted the staff to be trained and keep an eye on everything. Like they're keeping an eye on the gym equipment, they're keeping an eye on the skate park, so.
So we also mentioned including uh cameras and uh kind of updating the overall security and medicine kits all around. So we're gonna continue to do that, and um since we cut back the hours a little bit on uh school nights, um, and increase the pay of the people working there, they're gonna be more um acute and more inclined to kind of um look around with their additional training.
Yeah, and then um going off of the staff, we wanna make sure that they're all like CPR certified and first aid, like comfortable with that. So in the event of any um like emergency in the skate park or the basketball court or anywhere really, that they're trained and ready to help any teen with that.
Thank you, you guys did a great job. The third group to present will be Renzo, Dylan, Brett, Summer, Alyssa, Kyle, and Tom.
The total of the entire budget is six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We will use this money for a new skate park, reprogramming, renovation and decor, and a new mural. We will allot fifteen thousand dollars to creating the mural, which will include the muralists and materials, twenty-five thousand dollars to reprogramming, and eighty thousand dollars to renovations, which is a total of a hundred twenty thousand dollars for interior modifications. This money will be used to add a mural designed by students on the exterior of the building, along with all of the interior modifications our class has picked, such as a mini golf course, a unique glow-in-the-dark feature, a slide leading into a foam pit, newly renovated bathrooms, new ceilings and paint, brand-new stronger Wi-Fi and computers, along with gaming systems and various arcade games. In addition, we will dedicate a portion of the interior budget towards office space equipment, fire and safety gear, and the addition of a fully functioning and brand-new snack bar which will generate continuous revenue. After the interior renovation of the teen center, we will use the remaining five hundred and forty thousand dollars for the demolition of the basketball courts and the expansion of the skate park. Along with creating a state-of-the-art skate park, we will use a portion of the money for activities for the community such as skate competitions, organize meetups with professional skaters, and much more. Our goal is to use this money in the best way possible and create a teen center facility and skate park that not only excites and supports local skaters, but also attracts outside traffic in order to help financially support the teen center year-round and support local businesses that surround it.
We want to add Wi-Fi because it's very essential nowadays when everyone has phones. This would also be beneficial because we would like to add some new TVs and gaming consoles, which would require Wi-Fi to be able to play. We would like to purchase two sixty-five move Samsung TVs for the teen center. The cost would come out to be six hundred dollars each. We also plan on adding a P S four and a Nintendo Switch, which would cost five hundred and ninety-eight. We also plan on adding a PS4 and a Nintendo Switch, which would cost five hundred ninety-eight dollars combined. Adding wifi to the teen center would increase revenue and popularity because it offers teens a variety of activities within the teen center. Wifi also adds the possibility of being able to work on schoolwork and homework, because most of the workload from school is now online. It would be a game changer for the teen center. The best deal we found was one from Spectrum where the speed of the internet would be four hundred megabits per second with unlimited data. The payments would be fifty dollars upfront and forty-five dollars per month for the first twelve months, and then sixty-five dollars every month afterwards. And the router type company, the wifi, would come out to be eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. To enhance cellular use, we would add charging stations so that people can charge and use their phones, which can be helpful for those. Who stay at the teen center for prolonged periods of time. You would want to get two outlet extensions, which would have six extra plugs and two USB ports, which would be valued at thirteen ninety-seven per unit. Outside, we would like to install a relatively large projector in order to have outdoor movies. The projector itself would be ninety dollars and the screen would be two hundred and nine dollars.
The budget we are able to use in order to renew the skate park is close to five hundred forty thousand dollars. The expansion of the skate park without the canopy would roughly cost three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The price of square foot ranges from twenty-five to sixty dollars, but the average cost is forty-five dollars. We will expand the skate park by taking out the basketball court and using that space for the skate park. We will also be adding a lot more to the skate park, like a pool, adding clothing to all the quarterpads. Another idea we have is adding a double set, three-by-three. Into the double set, we will add a hubba and also handle. Couple other rail features would be added also, such as a couple of flat bars, a pump-up. Also, a new addition to the skate park would be two transition ramps next to the double set. The big two will be staying in the park and we will be putting a wall right right before it. The bowl will be in the shape of a piggies spinner, and we wanna add overhangers in the skate park.
The teen center will provide helmets for people who do not bring one. There will also be an opportunity to wear a helmet by signing a waiver of safety precautions and an adult's permission if one is underaged. We are also adding a specific time limit for younger children on weekends for safety reasons. On Fridays and Saturdays, children under thirteen will have the timeframe of two-thirty PM until five-thirty PM. For on persons fourteen and over to skate without affecting them from five-thirty until ten PM.
We also plan to host competitions at the teen center monthly. These competitions would bring students in and help us raise revenue. According to our poll, about seventy percent of students would attend these competitions if they were to take place. The revenue made from these competitions would be used to maintain and keep up the high quality of the teen center that we are building.
The teen center has two murals and a wall that we want to revamp. The outer mural on Grand Avenue and the smaller one inside the building. The wall we want to remodel is perpendicular to the mural on Grand Avenue. For the outer walls, we wanna remove the extrusion sticking out to create a wall out of recycled skateboards donated by local skaters and skate shops. This wall will also include the teen center logo that was once located inside the old gym. For the inside mural, we wanna keep it simple with neon lettering so it can pop on the weekends during glow-in-the-dark mini golf. And for the outer mural, we plan to incorporate different aspects like businesses in our schools, things that make El Segundo, El Segundo. In regard to how the mural will be painted, our preferred method would be to have volunteers from the advanced art classes from the high school to help paint. Not only will it be inexpensive, but it will be good for the community. But if necessary, we could hire a muralist to paint.
Our plan for the mural is to be as cost-efficient as possible. Our goal is to save as much money as we can. We want to remove the extrusions off the wall. Therefore, to hire a contractor, it would generally cost about three hundred to four hundred dollars a day. Also, if you're able to, we want to buy wholesale acrylic paint and primer to prime the wall. A brief estimate in total would be a thousand dollars for twenty gallons of paint in different colors. Four hundred dollars worth of paintbrushes, thirty dollars for two tarps to paint on, forty dollars worth of painter's tape. Two hundred dollars worth of paint primer, and two hundred dollars worth of varnish. Sherwin-Williams would probably be the best for these paints. In total with the volunteers, the painting of the mural should cost less than a muralist. The mural committee is very flexible in where we get the paint. Therefore, anything to benefit the cost would be best. Another option would be hiring a muralist, which depending on who, would cost about fifteen thousand dollars.
Do you wanna feel safe while hanging around the teen center? Well, we want you to be. This is why we would like to add certain safety features, such as sprinkler systems, fire extinguishers, defibrillators, and more. These will cost a small fraction, around ten thousand dollars compared to the safety it will bring to everybody inside the teen center. Overall, we wanna make sure everyone inside feels secure and is having a great time.
Council members, any questions?
Uh, can you just tell me a little more about the foam pit and the big slide, like where you guys are gonna, planning on putting that and?
Well, we're gonna put it at the, when you walk in, in the right, there's this wall, and then you're gonna have it connected at the top, kind of with stairs. And then right, there's gonna be the foam pit at the bottom.
Are you gonna have like people, like watching over this?
Yes, we will have, we will have people watching.
Are you guys gonna redo the weight room at all, or keep it the same? Because in the video, it looked like you guys didn't mention it.
We were actually planning on removing the weight room to make space for things like the foam pit and slide.
And with the snack bar, same thing? Plan on removing that to make room also, or keeping that? Because you guys mentioned nothing about that in your video.
We're actually, that's another reason why we're taking out the weight room, is so that we have space for the snack bar.
Um, also regarding the snack bar, um, are you, how are you guys gonna follow all the health regulations of it? And then since there's only two workers in the teen center, is somebody going to work that? And then also, where's the food gonna come from?
Um, we're probably going to decide that later on, but depending on where the food, depending on where the food come from, comes from. Um, that will let us know who's gonna work there. So say we have a fast food place working there, we're gonna have somebody from outside of the teen center working it. Whereas if it's just like a teen center snack bar with snacks and stuff, then we'll probably have one of the workers do that.
Do you guys know how much space the mini golf course is gonna take up? Um, and would it be, would you have to pay to use it, or would it be free to use at all times?
Uh, for the uh, mini golf course, we plan to do, uh, use a movable mini golf course. Which means that when we do have these type of events, we're gonna move the area's furniture out the way. And bring these golf, uh, mini golf courses out onto the area, and when we do use them, it'll be part of the events. So depending on what type of event it is, we could charge um, entrance fee or rental fee for like the pu- uh, putters or the balls. And when we're not using the event, we can move them off to the side and store them, so we are able to use the space for multiple things. And not just be stuck in just having mini golf constantly.
Um, I think you guys mentioned um, something about, uh, was it Spectrum wifi? Um, the prices, is that what, is in your budget, or do people have to pay that amount to get the wifi?
That's within the budget. The wifi is gonna be free for everybody.
Um, and then also you guys had mentioned that there would be like different times for different age groups for skating. How would that work and like who would enforce that?
So the staff would enforce that, and they would try to get all the thirteen, the people who are under thirteen to like, try to leave by five-thirty, as it said in the video.
Play off of what she said and you, what you guys said, are you gonna hire more staff? Because right now, only two people are working there. So I feel like they're understaffed if you're making just two people watch the whole teen center.
Yeah, chances are two people is understaffed for everything that we wanna include, so we probably will be hiring more people.
Um, you guys mentioned a, I think, an outside um, projector. How are you gonna prevent that from getting stolen? Are you gonna like, put it away, or like, can you elaborate, please?
As part of the safety and emergency thing, we are um, planning on putting security cameras and other safety features inside the teen center.
Also, to answer your question, uh, the, the projector is not gonna stay outside the whole time. It'll be like, put away. It's like, it's kinda like an activity to bring people like, in like on weekends, so it won't be there like, every day. It'll be able to go inside and be put away.
Um, going off of that, if you guys are making the entire thing like the skate park, where would the projector be set up?
There's still gonna be space. It's not gonna take up like the whole entire outdoor area, so we wanna still make a space for that to be able to happen. So it's not gonna take up all the way to the front of the teen center, so we wanna allot like, a certain amount of space. That's enough for seating and the projector screen and the projector itself.
Um, how did the polls react to your question about removing the entire basketball courts? I know it's a pretty big part of what the teen center is, so would you mind talking a little bit about that?
El Segundo is a really skater-based community, and the basketball court seems to bring in a lot of underage people. You know, people below thirteen, which is what we're trying to avoid. So most people were actually pretty okay with the idea of taking out the basketball court and replacing it with a bigger skate park, a more renovated skate park.
But how about like, I know the teen centers used for summer camps and little kids use them. I have. So how would you attract more summer camps? And for more kids to come without the basketball court?
We wanna do a lot of uh, skater camps, and we want to attract a lot of pro skaters. And we do that through our um, through our sponsorships, through places like Active. And we wanna hold camps for little kids, like you were saying, to teach them how to skate, you know?
And then where are you guys um, planning to relocate the basketball teams, like the youth leagues that do currently use that basketball court?
We can put them in the basketball courts in Rec Park, which is just across the way from the teen center.
I just had a question about um, the bathroom. Did you guys touch on that at all? And if not, could you expand a little bit more on the bathroom situation?
Uh, for the bathrooms, we plan to re-tile and to redo the stalls. We checked and we saw that the bathroom plumbing system does not need to be renovated at all. It's still in very good working condition. So what we plan to do is just new coat of paint, get new tiles, to make it fresh and nice again. So that people actually will use the bathrooms, rather than thinking that it's just someplace that's gross, making it actually more appealing to people to use.
Since you guys are gonna take out the gym and add the foam slide, there's an office in the weight room. Are you guys gonna keep that right next to your foam pit? Or remove that completely?
Yeah, we're gonna keep the office, but just take out the gym.
Um, I'm not sure if you guys mentioned this, but um, do you guys have any plans to work with the library with um, your remodel of the teen center?
No, we didn't have any prior plans to do that.
Um, back to the basketball court. Um, I know at the teen center, a lot of the games that are being played there are younger kids. And the basketball hoops aren't ten feet, and they're adjustable, and the, and the basketball courts down at Rec Park aren't adjustable.
They have um, basketball hoops that you can put in front of the already standing ones. They're uh, they're retractable, and you can just take them off when they're done, and they are for kids that wanna play with a smaller hoop.
Thank you, city council members. Okay, guys, if you guys can tell me why you guys deserve our vote, and why, why is your idea special to us?
How sick would it be to slide into a foam pit? Anytime that you want, like, that's pretty cool. And the mini golf course, and glow-in-the, glow-in-the-dark mini golf, like that's, I would love to do that. And the snack bar, and the bigger skate park. I think the bigger skate park is gonna be the biggest attraction that there is, because um, we're a huge skater community. And we're gonna, we're hopefully going to attract a lot of pro skaters and a lot of attention to our skate park.
These competitions that we're planning on having with a bigger skate park and drawing in more people is also um, really big for not only just pro skaters. And for teenagers, but for the middle schoolers and the younger students that uh, go to the teen center and see that. And it's just a great event uh, that I feel like we haven't had in El Segundo, or had an opportunity to have um, with the teen center that we have now.
Thank you guys for your time. You guys are great.
Uh, we're gonna commence on a ten-minute break starting now.
We can now resume the meeting. The fourth group to present will be Colette, Amy, Yana, Tara, Chanel, Sean, and Jessa.
Fire and finance committee are going to talk about the improvements we can plan to make, how we're going to change the teen center and how much it would cost. Our biggest improvement is making the teen center dual-function as a relief center, complete with a backup generator in case power is unavailable. The relief center would function as a place to go in case of an emergency, for shelter and immediate medical attention. If a hospital is not reachable or for the relief center, it would roughly cost four hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-five cents. And the backup generator would cost one thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars, giving us a total cost of two thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents to convert the center. The supplies include the first aid kit, a trauma pack with a quick clot, antibiotic ointment, emergency drinking water, crutches, arm slings, a wheelchair, and injury reps. Again, the center would function as a place for shelter and...
For finance, our main goal was to balance and find a middle ground within each budget. To accomplish this, first, we had each group send us what exactly they wished to contribute to the teen center. We took each list and found either a price or a price range. Based on each range, we came up with rough estimated totals per each committee. We then could categorize and organize based on where these expenses would go. For example, building renovations, the skate park, and the mural. For that, we came to the conclusion that the building, we would have to spend roughly one hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. For the skate park, we would have to spend three hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, and the mural would be five thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. This would bring a total expenses for this project to be roughly estimated at four hundred and sixty-six thousand seventeen dollars and fifteen cents, which would be three hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-five cents under budget. This allows for extra wiggle room for extra equipment and other accessories.
To help incorporate the library into the teen center, we wanted to include a bookshelf to provide easy access to any books students may need. These bookshelves would include school textbooks, summer reading, and leisure reading books. The bookshelves would be a part of the newly incorporated study room, which would be an area where students could work on homework or read.
Also, in the study room, we would have included three computers for student use, along with the printer, so students could print out any homework assignments they may need. There would also be tables with outlets in them, so students could charger their phones, or iPads, or any other device they may need to turn on.
We will be adding a Wi-Fi router, so students can access the internet and be able to work on homework on their iPads or use their phones. In addition to this, we are also including TVs, so students can watch whatever show they would like. And we included five of them to put them throughout the teen center.
Recreation committee relished in the brainstorming process of fun, fresh ideas to accentuate our classmates and our other plans. We hope to elevate this newly renovated teen center by hosting attractions and programs that can take full advantage of the improvements that we plan to make to the teen center.
We hope that new attractions like a brand-new snack bar and a 3D printer will increase the teen center's popularity. We also plan to host video game tournaments to attract the newer audience of gamers. Furthermore, we plan on representing the arts with movie nights and concerts showcasing El Segundo's talents to its prized generation.
Skate park looks to hold competitions during the summer and showcase its improvements. The reimagined basketball court that includes soccer nets can host both basketball and soccer tournaments. And if you forget your gear, you could always gear up at a proposed remodel center.
By adding things like a 3D printer and renovating places like the snack bar, basketball, and soccer court, we hope to make the teen center revitalized and restored to its original glory.
In the layout, we would suggest adding an extra door, also an emergency exit at the back end of the teen center, leading to the parking lot area. We feel this is... Because there are currently only doors in the front.
Another element we would like to add is a study area. The corner we would put it in currently has no specific purpose and would be an ideal area for students to work on projects and print out homework, without having to worry about being quiet like in the library. We also would separate off the area, so students wouldn't get distracted.
Some other parts of the current layout we would, uh, we would change is updating the vending machines by adding bars, so they can't be broken into, fixing up the stage and adding soundproofing to allow live music, updating the gym equipment with new machines, speakers, and cameras to avoid broken machines, and make a designated video game area and get new couches and TVs for the lounge area.
In order to support the idea that the teen center would be a relief center, we could add a large closet in the office area for the needed supplies. Additionally, we would suggest fixing up the bathrooms and the ceiling, since they are both currently broken in various areas.
Lately, in order to attract more teens, we would redesign the most used areas of the teen center, the skate park and basketball court. For the skate park, we would, we would change some of the elements to appeal more to skateboarders and get a trash can that cannot be moved or, uh, pushed over to avoid litter, which has been a problem in the past.
... welcoming environment that would appeal to more teens. The current paint has been untouched for the past decade and is in dire need of an upgrade. We are wanting to create a design that would bring joy and improve how the teen center is viewed by members of the community. The mural will represent a glimpse of life in El Segundo, as well as our town's history, encapsulating the things that make our town the gem that it is. This mural will serve as a way to enhance El Segundo's beauty by bringing eye-popping colors to a popular part of town. In order to pursue this project, we have asked experienced high school art students and teachers to volunteer their time and artistic skills to bring this mural to life. By recruiting local teens to create the mural, it not only allows teens to contribute to the remodeling process, but would also cut costs down significantly. With student artists, the mural budget would not need to include the commission of hiring a muralist. Instead, only need to cover the paint, brushes, and other low-cost supplies. These supplies are predicted to cost under six thousand dollars, which leaves more than a four thousand dollar surplus in the original mural budget of ten thousand dollars.
We believe the new teen center would benefit from being staffed with individuals that maintain good character and are held in high regard with their school and community, as well as maintaining a minimum average GPA of two point five. In order to incorporate opportunities for academic support, we believe a program similar to the Spark Program, which was successfully implemented at the middle school, could be used to assist local teens with their coursework and creating new job opportunities for academically gifted teens. In addition to being in good standings, employees would be required to be CPR certified and first aid certified to ensure the safety of the teen center guests.
Building and fire safety codes is to ensure the safety of the building and the people inside. These codes create a bottom-line safety plan that can be practiced and used in case of a real emergency. Building codes and fire codes are infused in the law, whether they are at state or local levels. Most of these codes come from previous lessons learned the hard way, so we enforce them, so it won't happen again. We decided to add another entrance and exit, so the newly designed teen center will not only be newer, but safer as well. To add, these forms of entry allow for a more secure place for not only fires, but also our wow factor, the relief center.
Council members, now would be the time for questions.
So, for the, um, movie nights and concerts and other programs like that, that you guys mentioned in the video, are you planning on charging that, letting anyone come in, are parents welcome? Just more, um, specifications about those.
People would have to, like, pay, like, I don't know, like, five or ten dollars to come, like, per person for those special events. But, like, those special events are, are, like, supposed to be, like, special, like, they're not supposed to, like, represent, like, all, all, everything we plan to do for the teen center. They're just, like, those special, like, movie nights. Like, like you said, they're just special events.
We also wanted to encourage any, like, high school students that were interested in, like, performing or being heard by their peers, and maybe in a different setting, to give them some exposure.
Um, I don't know if I missed it, but did you guys specify what exactly you guys are doing to remodel? Or if you're gonna remodel the skate park and basketball court?
We're gonna keep the basketball court, but, uh, we're just gonna revive it, repaint it. Um, I know there was an issue about the leveling, so we were planning to re-level it, so it's all even. As for the skate park, we do plan to remodel it to make it... I know I was talking to some skaters, they were talking about, like, that street skate kinda, I don't really know much about that. But we plan to, um, you know, appeal it to more teens, so to add, like, more stairs. I know they were talking about metal coping and grinding for all of that, so...
Did you guys incorporate this in the video? Did you guys have a budget for how much you guys were gonna spend on the remodeling of the skate park?
Uh, yes, I believe, I don't know if it was in the video, but we do have a budget for it. I know there was also talks with, um, I believe, like, skating companies, audience sponsors. I believe like skating companies, audience sponsorships, and I believe the total cost for the, I'm short. The uh total cost for that is somewhere in here. Yeah, so the budget for the skate park renovations was three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, to repurpose it would be three hundred and thirty-seven thou- or thousand nine hundred dollars. So it is included and um there is communications, I think it is hard specifically to come up with a plan. Because you do have to work with so many uh different, was it contractors and stuff and so nothing can ever be kind of specified, so I think, yeah.
Also some concerns with that, I know they were asking about, um, they were concerned about the whole trash, I know that was the issue, so we thought of an idea to. Incorporate uh instead of those movable trashcans, more so of the permanent ones that are inside the ground, so it's not like they can lift it. Cause I know they were saying before they would kinda use them to like skate on it and then trash would get everywhere, so that was an issue, so we thought about. Incorporating it into the ground so that wouldn't be a problem.
And in the video, I thought I heard a mention of a snack bar, but then also a mention of vending machines, so if you could specify on. Those, if they're gonna be both, if it's just one or the other.
Uh, we are looking to uh ma- to uh have both of uh snack bar and a vending machines and we look, we want our snack bar to have a. Like more diverse foods, so it's not just like ch- like chips or drinks. Cause like you could get that at vending machine, but at our snack bar, we like to have, I I guess more hot, like more like hot dogs and stuff like that. That that could like have, like honestly raise revenue for the for the teen center, but for the vending machine, we could have like smaller snacks that if the teens want it.
And we are also hoping, like, once it gets big enough, um, to like partner with like Blue Butterfly or like local um coffee shops or. Restaurants to maybe infuse like healthier vending machines while helping out our local communities.
With uh, you guys talked about a rent center, just renting skateboards or can you rent other equipment? Since you're making the basketball court a dual purpose, rent out balls, soccer balls, stuff like that.
Um, everything needed for skating.
Um, you guys had briefly mentioned in your video the use of a three D printer. I didn't know what that was for or like who would monitor that.
Uh, that would be for our engineering students at the high school. And uh, and al- also it could it could be for like anyone who like would want wanna use a three D printer, like learn how to use a three D printer. Be and like we could also like give lessons for people who are looking into like learning how to use one. Because like once again, some for like say our high schoolers, we who would need some engineering problems with some uh with a three D printer, they could just go to the teen center. And it would it would be there for them.
I believe the city manager has a question.
So um, us city managers, we just wanted to elucidate um exactly what kind of changes are you gonna be making to make it a relief center? And what kind of guidelines we need um to follow that, cause um a relief center needs a certain amount of space, a certain amount of materials and such. For it to be an actual relief center in terms of uh when disaster strikes, so.
Okay, so um for the relief center aspect of it, um the design originally is because of how big the building is. And the fact that has a minimal amount of walls and gapping, it's ideal for that. Um, also with the TVs being mounted, all plugs are gonna be higher up, so by having that, we also allow for other equipment to come in such as um. BP machines, I forgot what they're called. And so by having that, we can allow people to come in also. Um, by coordinating with different hospitals and maybe even the police department, or not police, uh fire department. Um, we can have cots or yoga mats depending on what classes are there for the lab to or for the weight room. Um, to have that there, also by having certain regulated um drinking water and everything in a separate closet. That always has to be replaced and in that room, there could also be potentially uh CPR equipment. And um other equipment necessary, um which is part of also having that um extra wiggle room is for that.
Also note, we were also thinking about for the whole relief center, for supplies to be stored would be in that back office where it's off of the gym at, so.
Yeah, and then going off of that, you said you were leaving the gym but creating a larger office, so how do you know any of the dimensions? Or what parts of the gym you're keeping?
Um, we didn't say that we are getting rid of the gym, it's getting.
Sorry, not getting rid of, that you were just leaving it there, but I thought you had mentioned expanding the office.
Uh, no.
Okay, that's my bad.
Uh, yes, I got a question. Um, so my question is, uh, is there any plans to do of touching the gym like any revamping or changing the equipment or? Might have been my fault, I didn't hear, so yes, please.
Um, so for the gym, we plan to revamp it, remodel, add new equipment. We plan to add um cameras in there, cause I know that was an issue about uh equipment being broken. We also plan to add speakers so people can listen to music while they work out.
Thank you. Do you guys have any uh research or polling data to suggest that like keeping the basketball court and the skate park the same size is the best way to go? Um, or any research for of any kind, really?
Yeah, so we have it, but we didn't include it in our video, but we have the poll if you guys would like to see that.
Um, regarding the extra money that you guys have, um, do you guys have plans to incorporate like summer camps and like things to do with kids with that? And um to connect that to the library?
Uh, yeah, we plan to use it to help fund some of the special events that we mentioned up there, like the the like summer programs for like the skating tournaments. And like the soccer turn- soccer and basketball tournaments up there and like and also with this like extra wiggle room, we can maybe. Improve some of our own ideas that we had by like enhancing them with say, I don't know, better better equipment than we thought we could afford.
And another question, um, did you guys have any plans to um refurbish like the ceiling and like the pool tables and all of that? I don't know if that was mentioned in your video, but.
It was mentioned in the video, but due to again contractors, um each one will depend, so the rough estimate for a bathroom remodel is gonna be three or thirty thousand dollars. And um the one for a ceiling, I believe it's um a dollar fifty per square, but if we don't plan on putting more tiles in, we plan on taking it down. And um raising it, so it creates more of a spacious room. And so by doing that, um it essentially it'll be probably be roughly like between twenty thousand and fifty thousand. Depending on how well insulated and the original structure is.
Alright, I have a question regarding the skate park, so I've heard from other citizens in El Segundo that. A lot of adults like to come and skate there, but it's a designated teen center, would that still be allowed for adults to come use it? And if not, what would be your solution to that?
Well, for uh the for the skate park, we we would we would prefer if it was mostly for teens, cause that is our target target audience. But we hope that with these renovations, we can attract some more attention to the skate park and if we were to have like say an. An older audience of skaters jo- joining, we would welcome them, but we were we were focusing more on like the teen audience. So like we're, so we don't know if our modifications are like suited for an older skating audience, but we're just kind of again. Focusing on our teen audience of skaters that we mostly took polls about.
So you say you wanna bring in more of a teen audience, but I I love the idea of having like the safe room and escape room. But at the same time, what is gonna bring me to go? What is gonna bring teenagers to go?
Um, so I mean, in the video, there's obviously going to be different activities, there's a tutoring program, there's a library program. There um is going to be different summer camps we talked about. Um, there is also different sized TVs, uh computers, wifi, that's a plus. Uh, and also. Oh yeah, live music at some points and um a stage and skate park and basketball court. Court. And stuff, so I guess the safety features is in case of an emergency, because I know in this town especially. Um, we're kind of in the center of a lot of big companies and big places. So that puts us kind of at a little bit of risk and we don't really, I don't know how well our preparedness is. So by having just a little bit of security, knowing that if something goes wrong, everyone can go here and this is a place where the community can rally if necessary. I think that's very important.
And can you guys elaborate a little bit more on the workers? I know you mentioned something about students and the GPA needing a two point five. Is that for tutors or is that, are you using those tutors as workers or just an addition?
So um when we're hiring employees at the teen center, we would like them to have at least a two point five GPA. So it shows that they're committed to school and we want them to also be committed to their job as well, since they are gonna be around minors. And people also when they are committed to school. And when we are hiring tutors, we would like them to be able to count on them and ensure that they're teaching the right knowledge and. Showing also with being first aid certified as well, having all those things for an employee, it's beneficial to the students. And the people that use the teen center.
Um, there was mention of adding another entrance or exit and I just didn't know where that was going or what. Like, were you guys gonna have to knock down a wall or was?
Um, that would be connected to the office, because right now the only two exits are by the front. And if those get closed off by a fire or some other disaster. Um, that would be the only other way out, which right now they would just be trapped if that were to happen. So that would just be behind the office and it would lead down to the parking lot that's like behind the restaurant over there.
Um, for current employees, if they don't meet those requirements, would they be fired or would they be given like a certain amount of time to meet the requirements or what?
Um, as of right now, no, but it's highly recommended just to ensure the safety again for the students. And for any new people that would wanna use it, it's highly recommended.
Um, you guys briefly mentioned live music, um, is, are you guys like using your budget to hire people? Like, are you guys getting volunteers from the high school or like what's that gonna look like?
So we're hoping to um make it a place where like teens can come and perform like what they've been working on, maybe just like. Showcase a little bit, try to get like a kickstart in front of their peers, but also yeah, we are definitely using um. Or we're planning on using some of the leftover money that we had in our budget to hire professional artists or whoever is going to come.
Um, also I just wanna say that this was a feature that was used back like way back and it was really popular and when we did our poll. It said that, or people voted that they would actually um enjoy this feature, so.
Because like back in the olden days. Back in the olden days, like I don't know about like now, but I don't really know of any like high school bands, but I feel like that'd be really cool to like start encouraging kids. To start a band, so I feel like that's a good aspect and a good use of time and it could benefit the community gathering everybody in one place.
Any more questions? Thank you guys, you guys did a great job. If any city officials would have any questions for any of the groups, groups one through four, you guys may ask now. So as council members, we have a very difficult decision, you know, to make, obviously you guys are all very great. You guys had the most innovative ideas and I think you guys did amazing for being high school kids. So we first need to decide on the criterias that we will be judging on. Uh, we wanna see, for example, which project satisfies our needs most to the residents and the children and teenagers here in El Segundo. And which proposal stands out to us the most.
And then going off of that, I just wanna mention for all of us council members that it'll be really important to not only think about. Who's renovating the safety aspect, which is definitely important, making sure the ceilings are good, the bathrooms. But what's, what group brought in something or groups brought in something that's new and that's gonna bring in more people? And generate money back into the teen center to keep up these renovations all at the same time.
Now, I don't know if the mayor usually does this, but me as mayor, the public is very important to me. And if you guys, any of you guys have any comments, I would love to hear them now. Thank you. So for the council members, uh which criteria would you guys like to identify? This could be budget, this could be um aesthetics or the coming from the mural, the usage of the of the building.
Use of, use of the skate park and the basketball court, decision what to do with that. The usage of uh the actual inside of the teen center, making it multipurpose where kids could have fun, but also in case of emergencies. People could come to, they, it's like a safe place or safe house where people can come into emergency and help each other out.
So now we as a council have to decide how we're gonna elect our chosen winner. Uh, council member Quinn, what did you think of the idea of group number four? Cause it's the most recent, the most fresh, of how they wanna make this um the safe room.
I thought their safety idea was um, I thought that was probably the best part of their entire presentation and I really liked that idea.
I also noticed that group number three was the only group who wanted to take out the basketball court completely and make the skate park bigger. What did you guys think about that?
Um, I think that we also need to take into account um people other than skaters and also the kids at summer camp who use that court. Um, so I think we just need to take into account other people who don't use a skate park.
And also I agree with that, we need to make it more. People of El Segundo friendly, just not skaters, as a former basketball player that used to play on that court. They host a great events like Gabbit and that brings in good money for the teen center. So getting rid of the basketball court is getting rid of uh the teen cent- some of the teen center's funding, which I know we all don't want.
Um, to go along with that, I know that like they have a basketball league that plays on that court and I feel like a lot of revenue comes in through the basketball. Program rather than skate park, rather than skate park, so I think it's an important aspect and I don't think it should be completely trashed.
And uh our polling data actually suggested that um people use the basketball court more than the skate park currently. So that just suggests that it's open to a larger audience and even though our group decided to reduce the size of the basketball court. Keeping it there was an important thing to us.
Um, I also heard a lot about the idea of having a snack shop or just a snack area in general. Uh, do you guys prefer the idea of having a whole like little restaurant in the teen center? Or just having a snack area with lots of vending machines and tables to sit at?
Um, I just think that we need to take into account the health um issues with that and then also the workers who are gonna work that. Because like we said, there's only two workers in there and I'm not sure if it's kind of smart to have a worker just work a snack bar. I don't know if that's should be their job.
And a good idea uh group number four had was the information of the new vending machines. While they also had the idea for the snack bar, I feel like incorporating new and multiple vending machines definitely helps. Um, get attract teens there. Also, speaking about the new snack bar, could host like certain events, sporting events and like right now playoffs or a major soccer tournament. To rent that out, put people could bring a potluck, bring their own food and people could just get together.
And then going off of that with the potluck and bringing your own food, period, um one of the first presentation mentioned. Um, the outdoor deck with the barbecue pit or barbecue thing. And like what are your guys' takes on that and if that would actually bring in more people? Because as you had just mentioned, like the food is obviously something that we're all talking about now and it's it's different than the snack stand. And it's different than vending machines, it's people bringing their own food, so.
But we have to keep in mind about the restaurants over there also, if they see people bring in their own food, they might feel competitive or. Or threatened a little, like saying, uh, people are bringing their own and they're cooking their own, less business for them, so.
I mean, that's how the restaurant works, right? You're always competing with someone else.
And in addition to the, the new barbecue idea that they had, don't we have barbecue pits or a fire pit out in Rec Park? Which is just right across the way, so I don't see the need for tearing down an entire hill and just putting in a little barbecue pit. That has to be supervised by an adult, where teenagers just wanna go have fun by themselves, you know?
I also believe that about this, uh, the basketball court, I mean, I think there's a basketball court down, going down the stairs. You know, that's right there, you have a pretty big basketball court. And I think there wouldn't be a need for one at the teen center if we already have someone else in Segundo.
And going off that, I don't wanna like make up my own rules, but since every single group seemed to go, um, almost significantly under budget. Then we could, since this is all included under Parks and Rec, you could take some of that leftover money if it is available. Or through the programs that all of these groups have offered and put it into somewhere else for Parks and Rec. Put it into those basketball courts, put it into the tennis courts that are there somewhere else. Since this is all one city and it should be working together and the money should be going to helping everybody, not just the teen center. If there's some left over, it can go somewhere else to do the exact same thing.
The city manager has a recommendation.
Um, we recommend that you choose your top two right now, so you can just debate between the two.
At this time, we will now be making our decision about the top two.
Now that we heard everybody's presentations and had our discussion, next we'll ask for a motion to pick the overall winner. And next two.
So, may I have a motion and a second to approve item number one and pick the top two?
I motion. I second.
So, those in favor of group one say aye, those not in favor say nay.
So, madam mayor, madam mayor.
Nay.
Madam mayor, it would prob- madam mayor, uh, point of order, it'd probably be, make a little bit more sense to just do a roll call vote. So you can direct the city clerk to read the roll and then have each council member say aye or nay.
So, we're gonna do a roll call for the top two, Quinn, which were your top two?
Groups one and two.
Jasmine?
Lily, I know you.
It's her twin, by the way, her twin, okay.
Groups one and two.
Okay. Audrey?
Uh, groups one and two.
Groups two and four.
Groups one and three?
Groups one and three.
Groups two and four?
Groups two and four? Groups two and four?
Yeah, three more votes, mayor.
Groups one and two.
Groups one and two.
Hi, groups three and four.
Uh, Jasmine, what was your vote? I'm sorry.
You need my group?
Madam clerk, what was your vote? City clerk, what is the tally?
The winners of the vote, group one got seven and group two nine, so those are your top two.
Congratulations to groups one and two. And now we'll discuss how we'd like to split the vote. Does anyone in the council need to be refreshed or are you guys ready to make a decision? Uh, will there be a discussion?
Nope.
Okay, time, oh, you have a question? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Royce, what is your vote?
I think if any council members took any notes, if you guys would like to say them out loud, that'd be great. So that we can refresh each other on what we heard and what we liked about it.
Um, I intend to group, to vote for group one because they are, want, they want it remodeled by students. They want to paint the skate park to fit the beach city aesthetic. Um, they're adding a barbecue pit, which was something unique and will bring in more people. And they got rid of the workout room, which is underused and they're adding an arcade, which will also bring in people. And if, it will also generate money as well.
I intend to also vote on group number one, um, they started off their video with good polls, I was able to look at the data that they got. Um, they have the all-purpose court and I think that's a super good idea. I mean, we get to use it not only for basketball, but for other events. Um, they'd be adding desk and the snack area and, you know, a study area for the place and I thought it was a good idea.
I'm gonna vote for group number two. I feel like they had implemented stuff such as the library, uh, replacing, uh, the fans with AC. Uh, food trucks as well as new arcade and furniture and as well as security.
I'll say, uh, group two because, uh, overall their ideas were good, replacing, uh, the fans with AC. Making it more friendly and, uh, more security. Group one.
I'm voting for group two based on their, their remodel of the skate park. Because they got a lot of, um, information from the, like, actual skaters that go to El Segundo and middle schoolers around and, yeah.
Um, to go along with that, I'm gonna vote for group two, not only because of the skate park. But they had a lot of new ideas on new events that would bring revenue and more people into the teen center. Such as like food truck nights and competitions and I think that would just benefit the overall teen center.
Um, I intend to vote for group one because they really took into account, um, everybody who goes to the teen center, not only t- not only teens, but kids as well. And they took into account the inside and how to make that a healthy place for everybody. And with fresh ideas that, um, like Natalie said, um, include, um, using other stuff like the gym. For, um, you act- to be actually used instead of being underused, so I thought their ideas were very fresh and, um, yeah.
I intend to vote for group one due to their information of the AC, which is much needed during the summer, uh, times here. And with their aesthetic with keeping with the beach theme, that really keeps El Segundo what El Segundo is. I know for us, we're super huge on what El Segundo is as, or as a community rather than, um, what it needs for, let's say like just teens or just kids or just adults, we like to keep everything pretty well-rounded here.
Hello, Mayor Boyle. My name is Liliana.
I'm doing a great job, actually.
Thank you, thank you, any crises since that been out or is everything under control?
I think I've got it pretty well under my wing, mayor. No, it's fine, thank you for speaking to me, we hope to meet soon.
I'm sorry, I can't be there, you guys, I wish I was there, this meeting with LA Times has been established for quite some time, so, but thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you, here you go, bye-bye. Well, that was fun. Are you guys ready to vote? We can start a roll call.
Royce, what is your vote?
I vote for group one.
I also, or sorry, I vote for group two. Quinn, what is your vote?
Group one.
Jamison, what is your vote?
Group one.
Audrey?
Group two.
Alex?
Group two.
Lily?
Group one.
Natalie?
Group one.
Cameron?
Group two.
Hunter?
Group one.
Cooper?
Group two.
And Carter?
Group two.
So, it's a tie?
Okay, as mayor, I would like to hear our council members from groups one and two. And I would like you guys to tell me why I should vote for yours. So, um, member from group one? I'd like a representative from group one.
So, I know, uh, one of the benefits of group two and the reason you said you were voting for them is that they talked to skaters from the city. And got evidence from a lot of real skaters and, uh, incorporated that into their design. Um, and though we didn't have it in our video, we actually had a bunch of skaters in our classroom that also contributed to the design of the skate park. And so that, along with our beach theme, along with the, uh, barbecue area, along with the reduced size, uh, multi-purpose court. Um, and the arcade games that are gonna bring in revenue for the city. Um, I think our design is overall the most well-rounded and will just be the best for the city.
We're a little split up, but I said group two and they said group one, so.
Um, me and Summer say group one because they had the best ideas that would bring teens in.
And, uh, I say group two because, uh, it not only incorporates, um, individual activities, but it also brings in the, um, community of El Segundo. That's kind of what El Segundo is about, our local businesses and all of our local events is what makes this little community truly special. So that's why I think we should incorporate that in our teen center as, um, one.
Group one, um, also does that.
The problem with group one is saying adding a barbecue pit, which I believe the rec park already has. So by take, by putting that in, you're taking away from the family aspect of a park down there, so.
Um, I disagree, I, I think it also brings, um, uh, friends and family together as well. And I believe that you can have that in two places at once.
That is true, but all throughout the presentation, people are saying, we're making this a teen center, not a family center. The, that's what the park is for, families.
Yes, Cameron, but we were also talking about how the basketball courts are also at the rec park and you fought against doing that, so.
And it's not just a barbecue, um, sen- it's also a deck where everybody can hang out. And, um, we're not just incorporating teens because kids go there in the summer for summer camps as well. And we could also do activities with that in the summer, so I disagree.
And then also, group one, they incorporated a lot of new ideas and a lot of fresh things to bring in new people. And less just renovating things that are already there, because we need more than just a renovation of everything and every activity that's already there. We need more than just some programs that'll bring in money once a month, we need fresh ideas and a complete, not only cleanup, but renovation. And I really feel like group one had all of those things combined into one project.
And I think, um, we should not just think about money, but I think also, um, the community and the friends and the kids who go there. Because just thinking about money would be, um, an aspect that would prevent from the deck. And I think that that's irresponsible of us to just think about the money aspect.
Also, I would like to mention something, um, I believe in that the barbecue, especially the deck. I don't think many teenagers nor children would use it, that, what are they gonna do, just sit down? There's nothing, no activities for them to do. It, it literally appeals to no attraction, in my opinion.
I believe that's why we'll bring in activities to be able to use it, you know, bring in summer camps and then have, you know, their summer camp leaders cook up some hot dogs. Cook up some burgers and enjoy it with the kids, you know?
A hundred percent.
Brings in community.
And the, the, our, our design already has a lot of activities throughout the entire teen center, so this is just an added-on space. We're not taking away from some space that's already being used for activities and replacing it with this nothing area. Instead, we're using it as a place where people can hang out while other, while their friends are skating, while their friends are playing arcade games. Uh, they can eat, they can hang out, there can be fire pits, whatever, um, and like she said, we can bring in activities as well.
I'm saying real quick, I think, uh, or just refresh my memory, is there an exact place where the deck is gonna be?
Yeah, over the, the hill area, there's, we did a lot of research on the safety and the way that it could be constructed, um, yeah.
Saying, since the hill's unslanted, how are you guys gonna implement that, if I may ask, just curious?
Over the pole, there would be longer, uh, beams in the end connecting it to the ground at the bottom of the hole, uh, the, the hill. And then, um, it would connect sort of like where the basketball court is.
And, um, also in our poll data, um, more than half of our, um, And, um, also in our poll data, um, more than half of our, um, uh, the people who answered said that they'd, um, go to the teen center more if we had a deck in it, so.
And it, it wasn't just like a, that wasn't a single answer question, it was you could choose as many as you wanted, and that was the most popular out of all our, uh, new included, uh, features, was the barbecue deck area.
City Manager, did you guys have something to say?
Oh, so we have a recommendation for the mayor. Uh, so our recommendation is for you guys to vote one more time, and if it's a tie, again, we're gonna pick three random chairs of each of the periods, uh, randomly picked, and then, uh, they will decide. It'll, they will be the tiebreaker.
I definitely agree with voting again. I got refreshed with the, you know, hearing all this. So if we can do another roll call, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, um, my vote stays the same with group two. Uh, Royce?
My vote stays the same with group one.
Um, if I may interject, it might be faster to just simply ask who has changed their vote, instead of going through the entire council.
Good idea. Has anyone changed their vote?
And your vote?
Group three. Uh, no, I will change my vote from group two to group one.
Nobody else? Okay, group one is the winner.
Congratulations to group one. You guys have won our votes. We wanna thank everyone who participated. I wanna thank city officials, because this has been an amazing opportunity for me, and I bet for my classmates. I wanna thank Mr. Gas for bringing this idea out there, being the best teacher ever. I would also like to thank everyone for their time, the students. I know you guys worked very hard on this, and even though you guys didn't win, if you didn't, you guys worked hard, and I think you guys grew and got an amazing experience out of it, and I think that's the best one that's out there. So, um, this meeting is now adjourned. It is 4:32 PM. If we can have the students up here to take a picture?
Pardon?